I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for October 2nd, 2003. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. May we have the roll call, please?
Nicklin, Crabtree, Osborne, Becker.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Merk.
Here.
Foster.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public Communications is for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action on non-agendized items can be taken at this meeting. And I have one card from William Wyerick.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to address the Planning Commission. As somehow being cajoled into the new chairman of the Building Appeals Board, I thought it was appropriate to give a short report to you and tell you that we had our first organizational meeting where we got oriented. The members, of course, are, besides myself, Mr. Bob Daddy, Mr. Tom Farmer, Wendy Hoogers, and Dale Hansen. We're very excited and committed to this function of being both the local appeals board and the building appeals board. We have already scheduled another meeting October 9th because at the orientation meeting some issues came up we wanted to discuss immediately. As well as being on a sort of an on-call board, actually, there are no, we have no regularly scheduled meetings, but the reason that we're already having another meeting is we take the advisory function very seriously as, of course, you have a long history of doing so in the Planning Commission. And I think we all, of course, are kind of trying to work out the difference between advising on Title IX and advising on Title X, but, you know, I don't think there'll be any great problems in doing so. And we take, as well as the appeals function seriously, the advisory function very seriously, and that's the reason for the next called meeting October 9th. We have nothing yet filed in terms of appeals. But I just wanted to introduce myself and tell you we're excited to join in the efforts here to, I think, you know, continue and deepen the character of Ojai and maintain what we all understand as its special character. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything that we can do to help facilitate what you guys are doing?
That's an interesting question because I think the first item that, you know, we all have on our radar is something that overlaps between the two commissions, and namely, that's the second unit program that already the City Council has indicated they wish to see some changes in. We have some thoughts on that well, too, but we don't want to step on any toes save with the Planning Commission, but it seems to be such a mixture of Title IX and Title X that perhaps we, you know, might want to facilitate some structure for discussion on this together. I'm not sure how to do that. We're all very green and just getting our feet on the ground here, but we are very committed to getting right into the mix and start talking about making that program work as well as possible. And I think also we have a philosophy on the building appeals board that we want to use that advisory function to try to advise council on how to minimize appeals in the first place in terms of how policies and codes are written or any changes are incorporated. So, if you have some thoughts on how we might facilitate moving this second unit program together, I'm all ears.
Wonderful.
But you can, Sherry has our contact information, but I think we all, we certainly feel on the, we very much feel on the Buildings Appeal Board that it's, as well as many other people, it's very important to get this program up and running, and it's been kind of, you know...
Langishing.
Langishing is the right word, and it's time to kick it into gear and get it straight, get the ombudsman, you know, get the new panel member to choose the ombudsman, get the ombudsman on it, get the policy, you know, working in a way that's going to serve the policy goal that the council has set, which I assume is to really help with the Rena numbers, as well as just be fair to what I prefer to call, be fair about grandfathering. I have a little issue with the word amnesty for someone who might have had something that was in place for 30 years, and I think sometimes grandfathering is more of the spirit of what we're trying to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the service you guys are putting into that, and it's going to be interesting because I think you're sort of making it up from scratch. I don't think we have any precedent for that, so.
No.
So, thank you.
But I think, well, those come up.
Yeah.
I think the commitment the council's made to bringing in an additional citizens group, advancing transparency, I applaud, and I think we all feel very, very appreciative that council's taken this step. It's very good.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to speak on an item not on the agenda? We will move on to consent items. The consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. The one item is the minutes of the September 18th regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Can we have a motion on that? Do we need a discussion?
Vote to accept.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Osborne.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Nolan.
Abstain.
Merk.
Yes.
Foster.
Abstain.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is our Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report, but I don't think there's anything to report. Their next meeting is October 21st.
Right.
And you're going to be attending that meeting? Great. Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts, which I don't know that we have any. There's no context for that. All right. We'll move on to our public hearing item, which is item two, a text amendment to the Ojai Municipal Code amending Section 10-2.404 and Section 10-2.303 of the city zoning ordinance regarding residential building heights, TA 13-03. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'll be making the staff report on this. As you know, we've had some discussion back and forth between the City Council on the issue of the height limit, and I think the best thing to do is refer you to page five of Attachment B, which contains the most pertinent changes. That's the redlined version of the ordinance. And basically, what this proposed ordinance would do is to establish a higher level of review for certain projects, single-story projects in excess of 20 feet and any project in excess between 25 and 30 feet. So, at the top of that page, there's a new requirement that single-story residential dwellings equal to or in excess of 20 feet in height would be subject to the design review process, and that was something that had been recommended by the commission when you had your last discussion, and I believe the council supported. The second portion has to do with the buildings that are in excess of 25 feet but no more than 30 feet. And initially, the City Council had asked the commission about the feasibility or the desirability of actually lowering the height from 30 feet to 25 feet, and the commission responded back that that would limit the flexibility of design too much and advised against doing that. So, based on that, the council looked at a couple of ordinances in other communities and thought that another approach might be to have a higher standard of review for those taller buildings and to take into consideration at a little bit greater level of detail the impacts that a higher height would have on neighboring properties and on view blockage and solar blockage and so forth. So, that's really the extent of change to the height limit that's being proposed right now. So, with that brief introduction, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, the solar impact, I know we didn't go into any detail on that, and a lot of the communities actually do go into very specific detail on solar impact. Do you see that that's something that we would probably need to do? Because the language in there really doesn't give you, it's kind of a subjective, and that could be a problem, I think.
You know, the City Council hasn't talked about solar impact except in the context of this, and the concern was that these taller buildings not block solar access on the neighboring properties, but certainly the idea of having a more broad look at it is something worth considering.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this? I don't have any speaker's cards, but Dale, come on in.
I'm just curious. I'm Dale Hansen. I live in the city of Ojai. I'm just curious that, we don't have any firm ruling about the solar blockage, so how would that, how would that impact a neighbor and how would they apply to not have that done? What would they do? And then also the view shed? Do we know the answer to that?
I guess I can take a stab at it. There are solar access provisions in the state code, and generally, those relate to new subdivisions. So, for example, you could create a new subdivision, and within that new subdivision, you could create solar easements for the buildings that go within that. So, that's one context within which solar access is protected in the state. There's also just a definition of what a solar easement is within a state, and private parties can negotiate on solar easements. This falls way short of that. This is really a more subjective judgment that the Planning Commission would have to make as part of the design review process. You'd probably want to analyze what the shadow or shading impacts of a proposed new building would be on the adjacent property and look at the setbacks that the properties on both sides have and make a more subjective type of determination as to whether there's reasonable access for the neighbor for solar or not, and that would be one of the criteria that you would use in deciding whether going from the 25 to 30 feet is reasonable.
Thank you. Sure.
I would just like to point out to the public that this proposal would be a heightened level of protection for solar access compared to what we have now. So, you know, as it stands, there isn't any language that speaks to solar access where with this, then it would come to the Planning Commission, and that's something we would be directed to consider. It isn't a total quantifiable answer, it doesn't solve, you know, every possible question. I think that would be, but at least it does require that that be part of the design review.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have discussion?
I had one, I will call it just a consideration, and that was, I know that we're going to be doing the neighborhood planning, and I could see that this topic of building height could essentially come up during that process, and my thought was, well, is this premature or, you know, do we put this into place and then could this easily be modified down the road when we come to the neighborhood? So, it's not so much that I'm saying I oppose it, it was just something to think about, a consideration.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time looking at both sides of this, kind of thinking about it, and it's easy to think about the benefits of it, certainly, but I tend to look at certain areas of the community. And one of, I think, all of our concerns is you don't want to sacrifice architecture. And, you know, there's other ways we could address it, like, you know, no third-story habitats could be one way, the height could be another. I've actually been involved in projects outside the city of Ojai where we've done some really cool architectural elements to places, and, you know, the city of Ventura said, well, your max height's 29 feet, so we had to clip off the top of our building, which really changed everything, you know, we had to actually redesign it. And the same thing on the solar, Montecito Architecture Review has a solar impact or did ordinance, and we had designed kind of a craftsman house, really not tall at all, but because the house next to it was kind of a flat roof, 50s house, it came into play. The architecture review actually told us to cut the corners of the house on the roof, and it was just hideous, but we ended up selling the property because it was such a pain. So, part of me says maybe we want to look at a couple other community solar language to get a little more specific. I don't like arbitrary and subjective language at all. I don't think that's fair to the applicants. So, I have to agree, I think, with some of the points that Dale made, and I also think maybe, this is premature, but on the other hand, I think we should look at this as part of our neighborhood planning project and then maybe pass this type of thing neighborhood by neighborhood, where there are no two-story homes, and someone puts in a two-story, that could have a huge solar impact on a neighbor. That would maybe be an applicable code, but in other neighborhoods where there's commercial next door that's already a story and a half, you know, we may not think this is appropriate, so.
Any other discussion?
Sure.
Jump in.
Where to start? What I like about this is the flexibility in it, the way it's phrased here, and that it does take it to another level of review by the Planning Commission, which gives us the ability to really look at the individual circumstantial projects as they come forth in terms of solar and the impact on the neighborhood in terms of its height. So, I agree with what was mentioned, that I like, I appreciate the flexibility architecturally. I think there still can be limits, and this does put those limits in there. But the fact is that there is a level of evaluation that takes place that can prevent something that's inappropriate from happening if we're doing our job up here. So, I think for now, in terms of the actual footages they're giving, in excess of 20-foot height of the single story, and then it talks about two stories, I believe it's anything in excess of 25 feet but no more than 30 feet may be approved provided that such features are consistent. Okay, that's, my understanding is the 30-foot rule comes into place as a discretionary call on our part. Typically, I think 25 feet is the limit for heights in two-story residences. So, that makes sense to me, you know, in terms of just having, we have something in place that we can actually work off of, and we're just not winging it when these projects come forward to us, and it's a good start, and I agree eventually, inevitably, we have to deal with the neighborhoods because we're so unique from neighborhood to neighborhood in our community. The question that gets a little tricky is when you're talking hillside, sloped lots, this sort of thing, and you have to get a little more specific, I think, than the language that's here, that we're reading here in terms of the hillside impact. I know there was a sample from another community that addressed it their way, and, you know, there's some viability to that. So, I think that's just something that we need to look at, is, you know, how do we address the hillside? Are we talking about adjacent grade of building to the, following the contour of the slope of the property not to exceed, you know, X amount of feet? If there's a street on top, do we have to keep it down a little lower? These types of things. So, it gets real complicated really quick. In general, though, I'm in compliance with what this is.
Thank you. Any other discussion? You want to?
Yes, I, I'm supportive of these changes. I think that there's, you know, in writing these kinds of rules, we have to consider, you know, as you pointed out, the arbitrary and subjective versus flexible. And to me, this seems like a pretty reasonable balance. For instance, when you say, just to pick on the solar access, do not unreasonably block solar access on neighboring properties, and so you're already, you know, considering the context of the neighborhood. So, this to me is a balance where, you know, you're still allowing flexibility. It doesn't say that you can't build, you know, you have to build, you know, only 20-foot height. So, anyway, so I think this, it, one of the benefits is it certainly gives some specific criteria and things to focus on when the review is being conducted.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I can entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one.
I would like to move to adopt resolution 13, what was it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, recommending the City Council adopt TA 13-03 and adopt the associated sequo determination.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Any more conversation?
Any further discussion? All right.
I do like what you've written. I think it was well-written, but I do still think we've got a great Planning Commission. I'm not too worried about projects coming through us, but I am worried about the future. That language is just, it's just too open for discussion, I think.
Can you roll call? Osborne?
Just, if I could just make another comment, perhaps, is there anything that you think we could add to make it more specific?
That's exactly what I think.
Uh-huh.
I think there's something we can add to make it more specific, and we need to look at, I mean, the Montecito solar impact that I had seen was very specific, and so the decision was for the builder or the homeowner, you could go to a document and it could tell you that, you know, if you had a neighbor, if your lot was, you know, here's my iPhone here, and there's a house here, then depending on the time of day and season, there's actually very specific calculations that tell you how high this can go and how that, so you wouldn't have a, and also, there was a distance between homes, so that you wouldn't have a case where a neighbor came in and said, I would call it a nuisance neighbor saying, hey, maybe I didn't like the guy, whatever, that house is too tall, I don't like it. And the person's, you know, going through the stress of having to go to a Planning Commission, which is probably six months away because of the process you go through, and not knowing whether that neighbor's simple complaint and army of people they may bring in to oppose you is going to win on an arbitrary and subjective matter, instead of it being, look, their setbacks are beyond the limit, there's no calculable solar impact based on our requirements, therefore, you don't have a valid objection. And, you know, it may seem like, you know, this is no big deal, but when you've been through that process, and I have, it's not a lot of fun, and it can really affect your project. So, I'm not saying I don't like it, I do, I think this is, you know, great, but I think we need to be more specific because there's, you know, we've seen too many people come into this room and complain about something that has no merit whatsoever, but because they brought 15 people with them, you know, it changes the wind, and it's kind of depressing to see it happen. That's why I think as a body, we need to have some, sometimes you need to have very specific rules, and quite frankly, I think it makes it a little easier at the planning desk when you're doing projects to know, and you can say to someone, hey, you know, maybe you think you have a legitimate concern, and I'm sorry you feel that way, but we're not, they're within their setbacks, they're within their height limit, they have no solar impact based on our specific requirements, you know, you're probably not going to get anywhere on this. That's my only concern.
I personally would be open to a proposal along those lines, either now or at some future date.
I agree. I am open to proposals, too, but it's not my job to write them.
Okay.
So, I would definitely review one.
Mr. Chair, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
One thing we can do, whether this passes tonight or not, is that we could develop guidelines. Sometimes we build things into the ordinance, and sometimes we have an ordinance that refers to guidelines, and so if it's the desire of the commission, whether you pass this or not, that we do that, that's something we can put on our work program.
Thank you.
I did have a comment, and Rob, you pretty much answered it, but I do think we should have guidelines. I think, you know, even though we haven't developed the neighborhood plans, there, at some point, it should be added that we reference that. I'm in complete agreement about the solar. I mean, unreasonably block, what does that mean? And it could change, you know, commissioner to commissioner or commissioner to commissioner. So, I think that needs to be defined, and then also even the view sheds. I mean, it sounds so simple, you know, you can go out and you can say, oh, there's Topa Topa, and, you know, you don't want to block that, but I think there could be a map defining the view sheds, and it eliminates a lot of questions and issues that's, you know, can be pretty straightforward. I mean, sometimes, of course, there'll be some leeway, but I think it's important to have the guidelines, and I would definitely like to see that be a part of this. Otherwise, you know, I think it's good, but I think that's important.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm curious, is it possible to address the, I see how they're connected, you know, the building heights and the solar access and all that. I think this addresses the building heights fairly straightforward architecturally. Obviously, another component to that is going to be the solar access to that. Is there a way, I'm feeling comfortable enough to move forward with this, changing the language, maybe that phrase about solar, you know, however we want to phrase that, and then as a next, as another item, pursue the solar as an independent issue and have it work in conjunction with, thinking that now we can work in conjunction with this height regulation.
And I think that's a great solution. My, what would be acceptable to me, and I think also, it kind of puts the onus back on City Council, who asked for this, not us, they asked for it, is we strike it, and the City Council passes the building height ordinance, then we know, you know, at least we've gotten that far, and then the planning staff can go in and approach the solar with a little more detail, and that'll be a little easier for us to deal with, knowing that the height ordinance is preceded. If the height ordinance doesn't proceed, the solar is somewhat mute, isn't it?
Correct. All right. So, are we ready for a vote? Do we have a motion on the floor?
Or do we want to amend the motion?
I don't know. Do we need to amend the motion, or do we want to just?
We can vote on the motion, and then if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then we would need to amend.
Okay.
Where is, if I may, where is that phrase that references the solar in this?
Attachment B.
Attachment B on five.
All the red stuff. Yeah, right there.
Do you have a reservation? I'm just wondering how, one suggestion would be to just pass this as it is, and then we would, you know, resolve to come revisit it and maybe apply some specificity to this. I don't know if there's an advantage to deleting it, because then, I mean, I just don't see any advantage to deleting it.
Mr. Chair, I think if the desire of the commission is that guidelines be established in conjunction with this, that you ought to at least put that in your resolution, so that it's clear to the City Council that you're supporting this, but you're supporting it based on the recommendation that those guidelines be established.
Okay.
Why don't we amend the motion to say, do one vote?
So, that would be a condition to the.
Yeah.
Motion.
So, we'd have to amend the motion to include that.
Okay, so, just then, in plain English, then, we would additionally request that some guidelines be established on, with respect to solar access and view shed.
Right. Okay. And Stephen, you seconded that, you're okay with it?
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay.
So, now we have a new motion.
Okay. Osborne.
Yes.
Becker.
No.
Nolan.
I'm kind of between no.
Merk.
No.
Foster.
Yes.
Motion fails.
I think the motion failed because we had, oh, actually, we did, we had three no votes. All right.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number PC 13-.
Nineteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Excuse me, nineteen. Recommend the City Council adopt TA 13-03 and accept their associated sequoia determination, striking the solar, if this is clear enough to City Council, striking section four, title 10, chapter two, article 20, item F. And that's it for the motion, although I would recommend that we re-approach this solar ordinance at a future date.
So we'd basically then be leaving the wording the way it is?
Yeah. I think that would, would that accomplish it?
So I'm not exactly sure I understand the intent. If the intent is to only do the 20-foot height for single-story buildings, you would completely eliminate F. If the intent is just, is to go ahead and have a higher standard of review for buildings 25 to 30 feet, but not to include solar in that, then you would just strike the language relating to solar, which is the portion that says, do not unreasonably block solar access on neighboring properties.
Okay, I'll modify my motion to, revise my motion to include section four, but strike the sentence that reads, do not unreasonably block solar access on neighboring properties, and do not have a deleterious impact on view sheds, actually just the rest of that from do not forward. And then again, I would recommend that we re-approach this with some more specific language at a future date.
So would that item then be, it would just end at, maybe approve, provided such features are consistent with the context of the neighborhood? Would it end right there?
There was also a portion about do not have unreasonable deleterious impact on neighboring properties.
Right. That's your question, we should just end it. I agree, I agree. I'll modify my motion, so, the motion is so modified to end that particular paragraph of, may not be, may be approved, provided that such features are consistent with the context of the neighborhood, period. The rest of that is stricken from, is stricken.
Okay. I like that, Troy, thank you. Discussion on this? Or do we have a second for this motion, first of all? Kathy, you're going to have to second this.
Actually, I will second it. I will second the motion.
All right. So now we have a motion. Do we have discussion on this?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any problem with it, I'm going to, I'm going to support it. It just seems like it doesn't get you your goal. If, it seems like it would be better to go ahead and keep that language saying, unreasonably block solar access, do not unreasonably block solar access, and then come back later and be more specific, rather than just not speak about it at all. But that's okay. It's a minor, minor point.
So Rob, this is stuff we could, we could modify in the future, right? If we came back, if you developed solar guidelines for us or something, we could incorporate those into this?
Yeah, I think solar guidelines is kind of a separate topic and worthy of further review, and it might affect this and it might affect other parts of the code for all we know.
Yeah, the other point I want to make is I think if we pass something along to City Council, it needs to be very clear and very understandable. We have more of a chance of getting some, of a good ordinance passed through City Council if it's clear, and it's clear to our citizens versus unclear. And so whenever I see something that's unclear, I am very cautious to pass it to City Council because I think it can cause confusion, and we can take a good, what is written as a good ordinance, I mean, you, you know, as a builder, and you heard our architect saying the height thing can make sense and we can work with it, I agree with that, it doesn't scare me. That's a, that's a very contentious debate, building heights. The solar thing is not clear, and so if we want to get a good ordinance passed, taking this out, I think will make it easier for City Council to review it, understand it, and perhaps support the ordinance. So Troy, does your motion include making it clear that the, that we're recommending and requiring a solar guidelines to be, are you going to say anything about that at this point? I think staff is here and they would pass that along to City Council. There's no need to pass that. Yeah. And also, remember, we have a reporting function to City Council now, so perhaps Chairman Mark or someone here could go to that City Council meeting and be there for questions.
You know, I do think it's helpful to the council to know whether there's a unanimous commission, or whether it's more of a consensus thing, so maybe the thing to do is finish with this and then have a second vote on the solar issue, kind of like you did the first round, you voted on several different topics, and that helped the council.
Can we do that, even though it's not on the agenda?
Well, it's part of this, so I think you can.
Okay.
You basically are saying you, the reason you're recommending not to put this in here is you feel there's a need for the city to develop solar guidelines first, and you're recommending that the council proceed that way.
Okay.
Okay, just to clarify, we're, your motion deletes that last major sentence, do not, starting with do not unreasonably block solar access, that is deleted from this paragraph. Actually, it's your motion.
It says before that, right?
Yeah. Do not have.
Do not have unreasonable deleterious impact. Oh, you're starting there? Mm-hmm. So, and in, within the context of the neighborhood, which actually makes more sense than having that additional
Okay.
sentence. So my motion simply is to approve this ordinance with, with striking that language after that. Just, just to be clear for, for my opinion on this matter is, I, I don't have any issues with that, that motion. I think it, knowing that we're moving forward as a separate item with the solar access, one begets the other, so.
Do you have a City Council representative here? Carla, did you want to jump into this discussion?
And I am speaking as a City Council member, and I appreciate the work that this commission does, and above all, I do not want you trying to pound a square peg into a round hole. I want you to take the time that you need to present exactly what you want to the City Council. Do not rush it because you feel that you have some kind of deadline, because the most important part is that when it's presented to the City Council, we are clear. So I'm suggesting that if you prefer to do some more work on it, now is the time to do it. Don't pass it just because you feel there's some kind of deadline. Go ahead and make sure it's what you recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
So with that and with what staff has given this guidance on, I'd like to modify my motion. And I realize there's a motion on the table that we would
You can modify it, okay?
To adopt resolution PC 13-19, recommending the City Council adopt TA 13-03 and accept the associated sequoia determination with the following revision, to strike the language in section four, title 10, chapter two, article 20, item F, the, it shall read architectural fees in residential zones with height, excuse me, architectural features in residential zones with heights, with height in excess of 25 feet, but no more than 30 feet in height may be approved, provided that such features are consistent within, with the context of the neighborhood, period. The remainder of that paragraph to be deleted. In addition, I, my motion to include to direct staff to come back to the planning commission with a separate proposal for a text amendment for the Ojai Municipal Code regarding solar impact on developments within the residential zones.
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion on this motion. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Osborne?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
More work for staff.
We'll be calling Montecito tomorrow.
Exactly.
And Montecito Architectural Review.
Yeah, because they're not a separate city.
Maybe Santa Barbara's
Their design review is a separate board. At least in accounting.
All right. We're going to move along to the Director's Report and Director Actions.
We've had a number of different items come in for staff review. We have the Bank of America with their compliance, they're trying to upgrade their ADA handicapped access, gain better access to the front of the building, so you'll see some minor changes there. They're doing some interior work also as a part of that. We've had a number of different temporary type use, including, I think you were informed of the Ojai Arts Festival, their recycled materials, they'll be doing things in November, there'll be exterior locations across the city that they'll have some displays, some interesting artwork going on that you, you may see, and it'll be a temporary nature, but it may last for a few weeks, but it's a new project going on. Temporary permit for some outdoor sales, and just a general holiday looking coming in, coming around again this year, and so we've been busy in the office with a lot of the questions for some of these temporary nature items.
So, and I had a question along those lines. I drive past the Oaks, and I noticed they're doing a whole lot of work in the back there, and I presume they all have permits and everything, but we never saw any presentation on that. What is going on there?
They are doing some upgrade to comply with some handicapped aspects with that unit, and it's my understanding, Sherry may have additional information, but it's my understanding that was done through a Director's permit prior to my time with the city. But I think it was primarily to gain the access of the handicap compliance. We're aware of some other issues going on in that general area, and we're working on some aspects of that currently related to some vegetation or trees. So we're pursuing that.
Thank you. All right, and code enforcement?
Yeah, it's a busy area of the city. It seems to be taking a lot of my time since I've started with the city. We are ongoing on that, we're pursuing some things through the City Attorney's Office, and we have a meeting here in early October to discuss our policies, our citation process and that, and to look, to get some further direction from the City Attorney's Office with regard to some of our longer ongoing code enforcement aspects and some specific areas that tend to be cyclic and come back. We've also done a couple of mailers, we've done a leaf blower distribution to try to alert the gardeners and landscapers in town what the requirements are with regard to our noise ordinance, what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do based on the 1997, I think ordinance was adopted, and things tend to go for a while, and they understand the ordinance, and then we come back with some noise issues. So we tried to do a mass mailing and just give them the bullet points of what's going on with our codes and trying to get compliance voluntarily that way. We'll be doing that also with the new lighting ordinance, trying to send out mailers to the residents and then to the business owners with regard to aspects of that. If you have any specific questions, I'll try to help you on the code enforcement items.
Any questions for staff?
I guess I'm just, I'm curious, like, if someone parks something that someone deems to be unattractive and inappropriate, and it's determined by the staff that it is inappropriate, what kind of timeline are you, does it, I mean, you, it sounds like we're looking for the voluntary, let's take, we'll have them take care of it, that avoids a lot of conflict.
It depends what the code
How long can this go on?
Seemingly, there are some items that I remember from when I was here with you for six months a couple of years ago. They seem to come back, or they get cleaned up for a while and they come back, so it's, it is a
Indeterminate.
Right.
Can I respond a little bit, though? I think the commission knows that the City Council recently revised the policy as it relates to administrative citations, and that was really a tool that was missing from our toolbox. You know, some code violations are serious enough for us to get involved with, but not something that you want to spend a whole lot of time going to court and trying to seek court action on. We now have the ability to issue citations for zoning-type violations, and I think that'll be a very helpful tool, maybe to get some of these things moving.
Thank you. Future agenda items.
Well, we have the items for the next agenda being the Ojai Valley School, the Founder's Workshop. Currently, we do not have anything on November 6th, but we do have a couple of incomplete items that may file and may have the opportunity to proceed ahead. And then on November 20th, we have the housing element. As you see below, we've got the pending projects, as I indicated, a couple of those projects, they've all been deemed incomplete, and a couple of those I know the applicants are actively pursuing. And then you have the longer range items that'll go into 2014 also on that list.
Thank you. And Planning Commission Subcommittee Reports, do we have any?
That would be me. Yes, actually, the Complete Street Subcommittee met today, and John, I'll have to say thank you to you. You had forwarded an email to me, I believe it was Monday, and I made contact with Kate Faulner from the Channel Islands Bike Club, and she actually came today and gave, did a PowerPoint presentation, which is very informative. But she's also involved with a countywide project supported by Ventura County Transportation Commission and Steve Bennett, and basically what it is, is they're trying to put together an inner-city bike route throughout the county, so it's connecting all the cities, it's a really interesting program. And VCTC is going to be budgeting funding for that in their 2014, 2015 cycle, and actually starting some work, preliminary work in 2014. They are going to be putting together an advisory board, which they're hoping to get probably like staff members from the various cities, and then they'll have an additional advisory board that'll probably include a lot of bike riders and members of the public and what have you, and actually helping to further the process. But they've already mapped out a lot of the routes, and they've done some preliminary work, and they're actually working off of a master plan that they had done for the county, it might have been 2007. So that was very interesting. And then in addition, because she was with the Channel Islands Bike Club, she offered possible grant funding for any projects that we may be doing in the city. So that was exciting to hear. And then I also wanted to remind everyone that next week is Bike to School, and I keep throwing in, and to Work Week, and the Mob Shop, our local bike shop, in collaboration with the city and our Public Works Department, is going to be doing a week-long project on Grand Avenue. So there, and it's also in conjunction with the school district, mostly kids going to Topa Topa, I believe, or even like riding to Noradoff or Attila Hop, so there'll be a whole, an area between Signal and I think Mercer, that they're actually going to be doing some signage, altering some of the parking a little bit, and encouraging bike rides, so just letting you know about that.
Is that just for the week?
Yes, for the week, right. So they'll be putting out signage this Thursday, you know, notification, and then it actually starts on, it's Monday through Friday. So that's really good, and what else? Oh, and, you know, we continue to work with the Public Works Department and the grants that they've received, so they've just hired on a new traffic engineer consultant, and we're continuing to work on the project with signage for the bike trails. It's wayfinding signage, so that'll be really helpful. Well, and one thing I meant to mention about the VCTC countywide project, part of that is getting consistent signage throughout the county on all the bike trails. So for instance, Kate pointed out today that in Ventura, there's a signage that points to the Ojai Valley Trail to the Ojai Valley Trail, or I don't even know if it mentioned the Ojai Valley Trail, but they call it, you know, the Ventura River Trail, and it doesn't even say that it goes to Ojai. So, if you're local, you know that, but if you're from out of town, you don't, you get on the trail, and you're not quite sure where you're going. So, anyway, that's a major component would be the signage, and I think it's really exciting. So, I'll keep everyone posted on that. Any questions? Nope? Okay.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strobel, the last item on our agenda is the city council liaison.
You know, before, before I tell you how wonderful you are, I misled Scott Ecker. I didn't realize you had already discussed future agenda items.
Yeah, that's fine.
And did you want to speak about that?
No, I'm fine.
I have very little. Carol Smith is your liaison, she's out of town, that's why you're getting me again tonight. I don't really have anything that you haven't already discussed. On the council agenda, we're dealing with transportation grants and an agreement with the county on, what's in it? It's a software program to verify the conditions of city streets, so we're working with the county, but, so that's mainly what we've been doing.
Don't forget the Styrofoam ban.
I did forget the Styrofoam ban. I didn't forget the Styrofoam ban, I just don't want to discuss it. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them if I can. No, good.
All right. Thank you, Carolyn. And that concludes our meeting.